All right, I'll call the meeting to order for tonight's city council meeting of June 20th, 2017. We would all rise for the pledge allegiance.
Aye.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would you like to do a roll call for us, please?
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Okay, moving to the minutes of the May 16th city council meeting, do I have a motion to approve or any corrections?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the city council minutes of May 16th, all those. Can we do that?
I can do a roll call if you would like.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you. All right, now let's see if we can get it right this week, right? Okay, that takes us to correspondence. Do any of the council members have correspondence they would like to share?
I've got a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead.
The first call I got was in reference to vehicles passing on the right, passing other vehicles on the right, and particularly in school zones, and we're sort of getting schooled up on that a little bit, Dan Drescher and I, to figure out if there's anything that can be done or not. There are some real specific regulations behind when you can pass and when you can't, so it might come down to a matter of policing and watching and reporting on certain things, so more to come on that later. The other call I received was from some concerned citizens that live down on Fremont Street and issues at the pier and who enforces the different regulations there, so I did get a memo from the chief saying that he understands the concerns and that if calls are made for issues like that, especially on public peers, things that do have regulations like that, there will be an officer that will make his or her presence known out there if people are calling on that, and actually, he's gonna ask them to step up some patrolling of those areas, at least during the summer months here, to see what's going on. Some of the biggest issues that they were seeing was, there's a regulation that says if swimmers are present, you can't fish, and some of those things are being ignored down there, putting swimmers in danger, so that's all I had.
So you talked to the police chief, but he's gonna kind of look into it, kind of thing?
Yeah, the chief said that biggest concern is if somebody calls, will the police come down there and enforce those regulations? And chief said, yeah, if somebody calls in, we'll come down there and look at this, we'll look at the situation, and then they'll also make some extra tours down to those different public peers to make sure nothing else is going on that shouldn't be happening.
Okay.
I also had contacts on those two subjects, and I looked at the ordinance, and it's pretty clear to me, but Dan might dispute it, that if fishers are there, the swimmers have to leave, it's the other way around. It was intended to be a safety thing for the swimmers, so, and I talked to the chief about enforcement also, and I also talked to the chief about the passing on the right and crosswalks by the schools.
Okay.
And I received the same call, both the crosswalks, and went down there and observed some of it, so it's the only one I had.
And is that from the other council members? And I had, I did get contacted as well about the passing on the right. I met with the chief about that. He said, one of the things that's causing some problems with passing on the right is the fact that a lot of people in Lake Mills don't use their turn signals to tell people whether they're turning right or left. They stop and they turn left but never put their signal on, and that contributes to problems where people then assume the person is turning left when they're not, and then you might be waiting for someone to cross. However, in places where there is an appropriate space to pass on the right, it is still the person who's driving's duty to not go zooming through there. They need to go around, stop, check, make sure there's nothing going on, and then they can pass on the right. You can't just zoom by, I mean, you can, but then you take the risk of hitting somebody, and we don't want anybody to get hit. But passing on the right is not illegal by state standards, but being careless is a problem, so, and they are watching crosswalks as much as possible, they will be looking into it more, and we'll go from there. So, Dan, do you have anything to wish to add to that?
No, that's pretty good.
Okay, all right, so that takes care of correspondence. Questions from public comment? Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet on the podium. Okay, did you wish to speak to us at this time?
He's our auditor.
Well, I know, but he is a person, and we didn't want to overlook that.
I'm not a resident, so no, I won't be speaking.
Well, okay, but thank you for coming. We'll talk to you later. All right, city managers' report?
Well, the first thing I wanted to note is that I think Misty's added some new information to the back room for people who attend the meeting.
I'm getting some stuff delivered this week, and then it will be there.
Ah, okay, so there will be information included at the back that tells you what's going on at the meeting? So if you're watching and you want to know what a public hearing is, or you want to know how questions of public correspondence are handled, or what's going on at the meeting, it gives you a brief definition and explanation of that. It also gives you a handout of, and pictures of who all the council members are, and then it also has a listing of all the city staff, so that if you're in the meeting, you know who's participating.
Okay, I think I'm a little lost, because I missed the very beginning of what you said. Wasn't you saying that there will be something in the back of the room here?
Yeah, there should be where those two boxes are there at the back.
Yeah, mhm.
Bins. There will be information pamphlets that people can take, and then they will have additional information so that they're more informed about what's happening at the meeting instead of trying to figure out what's going on while they're sitting there. It gives them some level of ability to understand what's occurring at the meeting.
Okay, so for the public, if you come to a meeting here in City Hall, be sure to pick up the information packet that will be there starting the next time we meet?
Yes, they should definitely be out there by our next city council meeting in July.
Okay, so that will help you to follow along and know who's doing what and so forth, so another effort on our part to be open and...
Transparent.
Transparent and just basically friendly with our citizens, okay? Thank you, that's a great idea. Anything else?
We have the recycling grant that was attached to the agenda, the capital budget information, the budget report, the general fund check register, and the PD monthly report that have all been included. I want to remind you again that all three of those are provided to meet our financial policies requirements and to be a financially transparent government and to keep up with our auditors' requirements. So, is there any questions on any of that?
I had a question on the recycling grant. For some reason, I don't ever remember this before, and what do we use that for? Does that offset costs for citizens for their recycling costs, or?
If you look in the sanitation budget, there is a line item that has the grant funds, and basically, we use that to offset the cost of recycling, so when the garbage truck comes to your house and there's that one, we use that to offset that. There's some fees, but then there's, some of that's offset, so like, if they charged us $180,000, we'd only charge out $160.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. I just, I was drawing a blank there for some reason, and thank you.
How frequently have we gotten that grant in the past?
Every year.
Okay.
But it's gone down over the years, hasn't it?
It's gone up and down.
Oh.
From probably, I'm trying to think, definitely in the 2010 budget, it went down. Then it stayed pretty flat for a while, and then it came up, and it went down again, and then this year it went up again.
And that's not a reflection of us, that's a reflection of the state government, right?
Yes, it's a reflection of the state saying that we're not living up to our obligations as we originally intended, but be thankful you're getting anything. Which, I don't know, if you follow the state, they tend to do that quite a bit. At least not as bad as Illinois, though. Illinois is really bad. But that's kind of the makeup of funding in Wisconsin.
Okay, and there'll be other times during the meeting when we might ask you questions about specific items on the agenda.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
We had some pretty extensive conversations on street projects today. So Water Street is currently replacing the sanitary sewer laterals that weren't able to be completed last year with the sewer lining project because of their unusual construction, and Water Street being named for the reason it's a problem is that there's a lot of water down there. It's taken an extensively long period of time to replace those, and then on top of it, we found lead laterals, lead water service laterals, which we then had to also replace. So it's been quite a lengthy project, a lot longer than we originally anticipated, and they're probably not going to get out of there this week yet.
But the street will be open for traffic because of?
They will be closed.
Lake Street being closed.
In certain areas for probably the duration of their work time, because the holes are so big that the street isn't usable with the construction equipment, but you find is that the sand is flowable, so it keeps kind of flowing in, and the hole keeps getting bigger and bigger, and so it's just a hazard, and it's better to close the street.
So how far down is it? We came and didn't notice anything from our?
It's down towards, between Washington and Oak.
Okay.
And I think we'll have one between Washington and Grove.
I think that one might be mine.
I'm very positive it's yours. Yours was left to last because there's a lot of issues. But then we'll be done with the digging, then we're waiting for the sidewalk repairs, curb repairs, and the asphalt repairs, and then it will be oiled and chipped. So there'll be a lot of work in that street this year for those residents. We received our testing reports, our preliminary testing reports on East Lake Park Place.
Oh, how did that come out?
I prefer to wait until we actually get the final report.
Oh, it'll be coming to the council.
There was some opinions on what had occurred, but until we actually see what the expert says, I...
Yeah, that's fine.
And then we'll get it out. But we did set a course for where we wanted to head and what timeline we're on, and so we are taking care of that. Is there anything else? We did a lot of budget work, getting everybody up to speed on what their budgets are and how they're constructed, and getting ready to finalize their documents for the next fiscal year, because I have to have yours to you by September 1st. In fact, my days have been spent running the budget address and putting in all the fiscal data that's associated with that, so. Anything else?
That sounds like you're busy, plus a lot of meetings, right?
Yeah, a lot of meetings.
So...
We also did the maintenance pre-con today for all the oil and chip, crack filling, melon overlays, asphalt patches. That was all the way right. And concrete work, so, like sidewalks and curb and gutter.
Well, thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item seven, acceptance of minutes of police and fire commission from April 20th, 2017, housing authority from March 28th, 2017, planning commission March 28th, 2017, public works board April 11th, 2017, public works board May 9th, 2017. So those will be placed on file. And under number eight, council business, we have our yearly miscellaneous licenses, we have weights and measures, and we have tavern operators licenses. Some are new and some are renewals, most of them are renewals. All of them are on the website. You can go right to the city website and see all, well, of the renewals, it's 103... 103 renewals. And 13 new. And 13 new, thank you. And then just the one for Dogan Court for the weights and measures. So I don't think we need to read all those names since they're all right out there for everybody in the public, and so, but I will accept a motion to approve them.
So moved.
For both the weights and measures and the tavern operators, I saw, okay.
Yes.
Can we combine them, or do we need to do?
Let's do individual.
That's okay, all right, so I have a motion.
Let's do individual items, since they're separate agenda items.
Two separate items, yeah.
So weights and measures, one.
Okay, let's do weight and measures first, then. Okay, I've got a motion for weight and measures.
Second.
I got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll on that, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, now we'll move to tavern operators licenses, renewals, and new.
I move that we grant the tavern operators licenses for the renewals and the new.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, okay, and Mr. Fritsch seconded. Okay, and any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you call the roll?
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to item B in this section, the presentation of the 2016 financial statements by Hawkins Ash, CPA, whose name is?
Chuck Krieger.
Chuck Krieger?
Yes.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Well, thanks for having me.
Okay, and we have a copy, hold on, I gotta move to that, give me a second here. So, do you want us to be in the document?
Yeah, we're going to do the, we typically issue two reports. One is the full financial statement, 60-some pages long roughly. I'll be going over what's called a summary financial report, okay?
Yep.
Obviously, if you at some point are looking through the larger one and have questions, certainly get them to Betsy, and she will send them on to me, and I'll answer them as best I can. But, so I'm just gonna spend a few minutes on this, and feel free to ask questions, save them to the end or whatever you'd like, but first thing to note, I always like to start off with the independent auditors' report, that's early on in your report, page two. Now, this is a kind of a condensed version of what's in the full financial statement. The item to note here is that it is what I call a clean report, which means it's, your numbers are presented fairly in all material respects, financial operations of the city, and including your utilities, on a basis consistent from year-to-year, okay? Now I say "in all material respects." Obviously, we do not look at every transaction. Number one, I don't think you'd want to pay us for that, and number two, I don't want to spend the time doing that. So it's in all material respects. But again, as I mentioned, it's a clean opinion, it's the best opinion you can get, and it's been the same opinion that you've had for the past number of years, okay? Moving on to page three, this is the combined balance sheet. Items to note here, very first item under assets, your cash and investments, you'll notice that the cash and investments did go down from 15 to 14, from 15 to 16, pardon me. Most of that was due to the fact that you had borrowed some money in '15 and spent it in '16, okay? And it was all planned expenditures, and that's something that happens periodically. You borrow when the rates are good, when all paperwork's ready to go, and you don't necessarily have time, let's say it's for streets, you don't necessarily have time to get all that work done before December 31st. So it's not something unusual, it doesn't happen necessarily every year, but it is, it's not too unusual. Other items to note there, if you look down at inventories, okay, inventories went from 600 and some thousand down to 340. That principally is the inventory in the water and electric, and obviously, there's some in the sewer. The electric inventory does fluctuate from year to year, plus there's always some items that are held in that inventory that, again, may be ready to go in the projects, but they didn't go in at the end of the year, they went in early in the following year. One other item, I guess, there is a amount under the receivables, okay, there's taxes receivable and accounts and other receivable, special assessments. You have some additional new special assessments, some significant specials in 2016. A portion of them were paid before the end of the year, but the outstanding ones added to your special assessments, about $100,000. And then you see receivable for a loan. You have a revolving loan fund in the city, you've had it for some time, but in 2016, you made a loan for the first time in four years, maybe, five years?
Two years.
Well, I guess, it's probably been longer than that. You were getting repayments on loans up until a couple of years ago.
Right.
But this is the first new loan in some time. And it's a revolving loan, which means when this person pays the loan back, you have those funds out there available to loan to other businesses in the community. There's criteria regarding jobs created and full-time employment for the first couple of years typically, so not everyone is a candidate for a loan from your city, but in this case, there was one that qualified and hopefully they're abiding by their agreement and reporting to you on jobs created, all that kind of stuff. Other items to note, fixed assets, as Steve alluded to earlier, it seems like you're always doing stuff in fixed assets, whether it be improvements in utilities or street improvements and work on those type of capital projects. One little item to note, it's not a big dollar item, but I just want to kind of reference it, there's a line that says Wisconsin retirement system net pension, okay, in the assets, and then there's also a Wisconsin retirement system pension line about halfway down. I spent a few minutes on this last night, I just kind of want to reiterate what I've talked about. The new regulations, new reporting requirements that you have, is you have to report the city's portion of the Wisconsin retirement system if they're overrun and funded. So Wisconsin retirement system is billions of dollars, and every entity that's a member of that has some little portion, if in 2015, the retirement system was funded at 102% roughly of their liability, so if you're gonna, and anyone who's getting Wisconsin retirement system retirement pay is happy to hear that kind of stuff. So for every dollar they expect it in a payment to go out, they have a dollar and two cents set aside. From '15 to '16, that funding went down to, now they're 98 point, right around 98% funded. So now, they're two cents short. That difference is what's swung some of those numbers on your financial statement. Again, it's not something you can go and spend, it's not something you can borrow against, it's just a number that needs to be disclosed. Now, lest you think that's all bad, I think there were probably 49, maybe 48 states in other states in the country that would be more than happy to have 98% funding. Wisconsin is by far one of the, they're in the top five like every year from a funding versus liability perspective, so no concern, at least from my standpoint, on that type of thing. Again, it's just something that needs disclosure, your financials, a relatively new disclosure, it's only been in there for two years.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why the two cent drop?
That you would have to refer to Wisconsin retirement system. Basically, I think what it comes down to is, let's say, return on investment, you know, they projected they were going to make 12% on their investments, they made 10%. They had a few more people retiring, so that stream of payments is different. Actuarial studies, people are living long, all that kind of stuff, and I'm just kind of throwing stuff out there, that's kind of stuff that they, you know, they have probably a lot of actuaries working on that to come up with that. But again, that's, there's a drop, I think principally, it probably has to do with return on investment. You know, 2015 and '16 was not a great year in the market. No promises, but I would think the way '17 is progressing, the markets are coming back up somewhat, you might see a little switch on that again next year. And then the bottom half of the page, liabilities, pretty much very similar from year-to-year. You know, you might have, there's an advance from other funds that dropped about $100,000 due to other governments dropping a little bit, again, that's tax rule stuff, and due to other funds dropped, that's inter-fund transactions, utility borrowing amongst themselves, or the city owing money to or from another entity, realize that the, and then there's the long-term obligations, that's basically your long-term debt. You can see there's 9.9 million, and then deferred inflows also has some Wisconsin retirement system pension obligation, again, going back to that underfunding, a little bit shows up down there. And then the equity, as I mentioned earlier, you spent some of the money that you'd borrowed in prior year, that's why your equity... you borrowed in prior year, that's why your equity went down principally. And on the next slide there, this shows just kind of a, a pie chart as to where the revenue comes in from your, uh, for your city. Public charges for services, that's principally your utilities. Obviously, you have taxes and special assessments is significant. Here you have proceeds of, of long-term debt, but again, as I mentioned, you're doing a lot of, a lot of work in the, in the city, uh, getting roads up to speed and, and that type of item. If you flip the page, that's, that's, this is the, uh, pie chart, the next page shows the, shows the raw numbers on this. Not, everything pretty comparable, I would say, from year to year. Property taxes up a little bit, but some of that has to do with, uh, um, you can, you can raise them two percent a year, there might be new development in town, you get to, uh, assess on that type of thing. I know there's some, uh, assessments, your, TIF districts are assessing, uh, property taxes. I know through seventeen, there's gonna be a jump in that stuff, kind of a one-time thing, um, due to some changes that state had from a reassessment standpoint. Going down, state share taxes, uh, up a little bit, uh, transportation, other grants. If you look down at the, uh, public charges for services, you see the water utility went up some, that's due to there was a rate increase that took effect in sixteen. And if you look down, like the last, maybe third of the page there, there's a line that says contributions from developers. And you can see, uh, last year you had one point, um, I should say fifteen, you had almost two million dollars, one point nine eight five, and last year you had a new ninety-two thousand. The one point nine six five is not from just developers, the way we're required to report stuff, that was contributions that the utility made toward, uh, improvements there, and then basically kinda donated, or the city donated it to the utility. So, most of that one point nine is not from an outside developer, it's kinda inner, inner company sort of stuff. But, you know, if you're looking at it, you're gonna say, holy cow, what happened? We had great development in fifteen, well, it was really internal development. Again, it's just the way we're required to report. Now, if you go to the next page, here's a pie chart of the expenditures. The majority of this is, uh, public works, and again, in the, in the public works area, that includes the utility operation principally, uh, which is, obviously, we saw the, the revenue was the largest portion of that pie chart. On the expenditure side, the utility and, and public works would be the largest portion of the expenses. If you flip the page, on page five, you then have the raw numbers on this. Couple of items to note, um, if you look most of the way down the page in the capital outlay area, uh, public works and culture, recreation and education, uh, you've got some significant outlays in some of those counts. You had some dam repair this last year, you had a parks building that was redone and part of that was Department of Public Works, uh, and, and parks, it was all in that building. Uh, so that was significant dollars, you, you borrowed for that and you, uh, basically that's where the outlay came from. You mostly, if you go back up to the electric, you'd probably actually decreased, uh, expenses in the last year, okay? And a good chunk of that was the purchased power. That's one of the items that you don't have a whole lot of control over. You know, you, you hope that your rates cover that, and they do have a purchased power adjustment that, uh, gets reflected in the bills on a monthly basis based on what, what you're paying for power. But you're kind of at the mercy of the companies generating the power. In your case, you've got WIPI that, uh, the entity that kind of takes care of that for you. And if they're able to produce power efficiently, buy excess power at a cheaper cost, that type of thing, that gets reflected in what they charge you, and therefore it also gets reflected in what, what you have to pay in the purchase power adjustment. It's kind of a quick explanation, but it gets a lot more complicated than that. But that, suffice to say, the price of power was down some for two thousand and sixteen. And then the other thing, I mentioned the conservation development, you'll see there's community and economic development, it went from twenty-seven thousand up to two hundred and thirty, again, that's a loan I talked about earlier, that, um, it was a two hundred thousand dollar loan, and there were already payments made before the end of the year, that's why you showed the hundred and ninety-five on the, on the balance sheet, statement of assets. So, I know that was really quick. Uh, I guess before we, we, we close out, the, um, statement of fund balances, um, we have a, a graph on, on one of those, a line graph, but the, the numbers on page six, um, we talked about the general fund going down. Again, uh, that was pay, that was, uh, using borrowed money that was spent in, in sixteen, borrowed in fifteen, spent in sixteen. Cash went down, you would expect the fund balance to go down, um, and it did from five point two roughly to three point three. Other than that, nothing real, um, odd there, you see, I guess I'd mentioned, capital projects shows a deficit, that's your TIF districts, um, and that's to be expected with, with TIF districts. You do the development, you end up not having enough increment over time to, to pay it all off, you borrowed the money, and then over time, the increment catches up, you don't spend as much developing, and the increment will pay off the debt and any, uh, any advances. And at some point, it will hopefully be a positive number. I occasionally run into them where there was a negative at the end of its, its life, but the, the life of a TIF district is twenty-seven years, I believe now, so you've got quite a length of time to try and collect increments over. And I guess last thing I'd mention, uh, you know, you, you had a, a new bookkeeper in the utilities this year, kind of, uh, thrown into the fire, and, and she did a good job. She's still learning, she's new, uh, but she's eager to learn, and I was, I was pleased with her efforts, so.
That's good to know. Is there any other questions from the council for him?
I might make a, a comment on that. You're gonna see a lot of reports from me in the coming months that are gonna be similar. We separate out the general fund from the utilities. And so, when you're looking at a report and you see revenues of public works is the largest one, no, that won't happen. The utilities will each be their own, and then there'll be the general fund, and there's no specific public works revenues in there other than state aids.
And, you know, when, when I've got a report like this, it's either, okay, go through the long one and mention all the specifics, or kinda go to the short number and mention why, why this number is really huge, and, and that's, uh, um, obviously, it's not as valuable information when you're putting utility in with city operations for public work.
Yeah, so if you notice discrepancies between the audit and what I'm giving you, you have to realize that I'm separating them out into more detail.
Which is what we want.
A pretty comprehensive overview in this report.
And that's good information for those that are looking at this at home, when they look at reports on the T, on the computer, and that, uh, that they're, they are separate, but for this purpose, they're in one report.
Right. That, that's actually for the GASB requirements who look at people who are trying to determine if the overall city, which the utilities are included, is fiscally sound.
But yes, and I even note is the, the utilities are not supported by tax revenue at all, you know, it's all usually fees. Some people don't realize that, that it's, oh geez, you know, my property taxes went up and the utility just added some stuff, that must be why. That's, there, there's no tax revenue, and in fact, the utility pays a property tax equivalent to the city. You can't tax them like a homeowner, but they pay an equivalent tax, which is quite substantial, to benefit city operations.
Good, good to mention. Any other comments or questions from the council? Well, we certainly have had enough bedtime reading in this week's, pages and pages and pages, so, otherwise, okay?
We're good.
Then we will move on our agenda. And that takes us to item C, which is Resolution seventeen twenty-seven, the acceptance of the comprehensive annual financial report. And I need to get my computer to that point, so, let's see. All right. We do have Resolution seventeen twenty-seven, and, um, on all of these resolutions and all of these motions, a copy is available to the public on the computer.
On the website.
City website, so you can take a look at those. Do we need to read this one or not?
We don't have to unless I'm requested to, otherwise, we, we have to read the title.
Okay. Why don't you read the title?
Resolution seventeen dash twenty-seven, Resolution of the City Council, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, accepting the comprehensive annual financial report as, as presented by the external audit firm.
Okay. And basically, what we're doing is accepting the report he just gave us, right? In a short form. All right. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
And a second?
Second.
I'll take Vicky's second. Um, so, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Okay. So, city's in good hands, and we will move on in the agenda to item D. Whoops, I pushed the button, there it goes. Sometimes the computer still does its own thing. Um, I would, we're looking at the discussion decision on request from the Tyranina Ladies' Club to use the community center for fundraiser. We do have a motion, and as soon as it comes up on my computer, we will do more with it. Um, hang on a minute here, let's go back and try it again. There it is. Okay. So, um, what about this one, is it one we should read? We read title, or it's? Okay. Why don't you read the title?
City Council Motion seventeen dash six dash two dash one, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Tyranina Ladies' Club.
Okay, just a minute. My computer is not going where I want it to go. Hold on. Hang on. Oh, now it wants to talk to me, so, okay, let's see if I can.
And this motion is just, um, it's, there's a request by the Tyranina Ladies' Club to use the community center, uh, this one would be a fundraiser, and so, when it's a fundraiser, the city council would have to approve it, and that's what this motion does.
What? There, thank you. Oh, there it is. Appreciate the help. So, now, I got it. So, let's see, once, we need a motion for the mo, I mean, uh, we need someone to make a motion for the Motion seventeen six two one. Is there someone who would like to do that?
I move a mo, the Motion seventeen six two one for approval.
And is there a second?
Second.
Now, would you like to talk about that, Steve, or Adam?
I think Misty probably brought it up, but the council, the community center, um, use rules require that if there's a fundraiser using outside vendors for a nonprofit, they have to have council approval.
Okay. And all the paperwork is here, and nothing outside what they've done before?
Nope, it's pretty consistent with the other ones that we've done. They've done this once before at least, and I know that, um, Main Street has done a couple down there as well.
Okay. And just for people who are interested, this, hang on, I gotta find what I'm looking for here. This takes place in November, right? Yes. November eighteenth is the date of the event, uh, in the evening from six-thirty to eight-thirty in case anybody's interested. So, um, we have a motion. Call the roll, please. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Okay, same kind of thing here, discussion decision on the request from the Lake Mills Rotary to use the community center for their fundraiser. We have a motion in front of us, Motion seventeen six two two. Is there a motion, someone who would make that motion?
So, move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, under the discussion part, um, just again, um, oh goodness, I'm having trouble reading it. What is the date on that? Oh, that's August, isn't it?
Yes.
August twelfth of this year is the date of, it's their second annual cheese, chocolate, and wine tasting event. Okay. Is there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
I'm just gonna read the title just for.
Yes, that sounds good.
City Council Motion seventeen dash six dash two dash two, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Lake Mills Rotary Club. And we do have a first and second, so would you like me to read now? Or do the roll call?
Do the roll.
Okay. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay. Moving to item F, the discussion decision on the acceptance of the grant for Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation. We referenced that a little bit earlier in the meeting, am I correct? Did we talk about that a little bit in the city manager's?
No, that was the recycling grant.
That was recycling.
This is, uh, a health-related grant.
Okay. Um, all right. There's my motion. Sometimes my motion doesn't come up on my computer, it just comes up blank, so, I don't know why. Uh, would you like, why don't you, it's not very long, would you read that one, please?
City Council Motion seventeen dash six dash two dash three, Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation Grant Acceptance Authorization for Multi-Use Facility Feasibility Study. Be it moved by the City Council, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation has offered a grant opportunity to fund projects that promote healthy living and healthy childhood development. Section two, that the City of Lake Mills has applied for a Spark Health Grant of five thousand dollars from the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation to be used towards the Lake Mills Multi-Use Facility Feasibility Study. Be it therefore moved this twentieth day of June, two thousand and seventeen, that the City Council, the City of Lake Mills, accepts the Spark Health Grant in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Lake Mills Multi-Use Facility Feasibility Study, and the City Council authorize the city staff to sign the acceptance letter and, and receive the funds. The City Council does hereby authorize the council president to sign the motion.
Okay. Do we have someone who'd like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion to approve, Motion seventeen six two three.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. I have a question on, if I can find, if I can get it to come up where I want it here, let's see. On that letter, um, come on, letter, you can come up now. Sure doesn't like me.
The, the time, the time dates that were required, Betsy, um, got relief on those, so that if you're looking at the letter and saying, we.
Yes.
Yeah. We technically have already spent the money because it's in relationship to the study that we've been doing for the multi-use facility, and.
Well, that, thanks for answering that question because the dates didn't make sense.
Right. That's typically the question I get on that one, and, and Betsy had taken care of that, and yes, it's a relationship to money we've already spent, but we had to tell them, we had to wait until the council approved it, so.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Some people would be happy with that.
Yes.
Knowing that we offset the whole thing.
Yeah, it didn't offset the whole thing, but it's, it offset a substantial amount.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Otherwise, we'll take a roll call. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Okay. So, like you said, committee will be happy to hear this. Okay. So will everybody in town, because we're saving $5,000, so, hooray. All right. Going on. Item G, discussion decision on the state municipal final agreement on the state highway eighty-nine Main Street project. So, let me get to that item on my thing. Here it is. Okay. We do have a city council motion. It's not a very long one. Would you like to read it and then we do it? Or should we make a motion and then you read it?
I can read it.
Okay, read it, please.
City Council Motion seventeen dash six dash two dash four, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of South Main Street. Be it moved by the city council, the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the agreement between the city of Lake Mills and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, a copy of which is attached here to and made a part hereof, is hereby approved. Section two, that the city managers authorized to execute said agreement and take such actions as necessary to implement such agreement. The city council does hereby approve the agreement.
Okay. Is there a motion for, a move to make a motion?
So move.
Approve? Okay. And a second?
Second.
Motion to approve and second, motion seventeen six two four. Any discussion? We do have paperwork to go with it here, quite a bit of it. Anybody have questions for Steve?
So essentially, then, all the major decisions about South Main Street are done now?
Yes. I would say that from our standpoint as a council and policymakers, it's done. What we move to is on September first, well, sometime in August, we have the ninety percent meeting, which everyone's supposed to have ninety percent of the plans done. On November first, everything's supposed to be final so that the contract can be filed for bid in March of eighteen. So, yes, I would say that from a policymaker's standpoint, that's true. If you read the contract, I think the last sentence says, and we can change this anytime.
So, in other words, daily problems that come up are not really part of those.
Right. Basically, you have your plans. And there could be some minor issue that comes up between now and November when the, when the plans go final, that we make a small change here or there. But basically, everything that you've read is pretty well balanced out. Now, let's say that something occurred during the construction, there, there could be changes that occur. And generally, I don't know if you remember when they did the repair to the cul, to the bridge under the Main Street there. We had the original agreement, we had the one that went out just before the final plans, and then we had the one that way at the end that said, this is what really happened and this is what we're gonna split on. And we actually ended up very good in that agreement. And that could happen here, could get worse. But generally, what you look at is, is construction never actually fully follows the plans. And so, being able to, to say, okay, there's something that needs to change, okay. But from the, from a policy standpoint, all the main decisions are made on, you know, where the sidewalks are, where this, how the street's gonna be constructed, how wide it is, where the parking's going, what the streetlights look like. You'll note that they're not putting in the rectangular flashing beacons, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. There's a lawsuit between the federal government and the manufacturer of that device, so they said you have an option. You can find a different type of device, or you can, we can just put it in the base and then when everything's done, you can put in beacons. And that's what we opted to do. So, those are kind of little small things that came up that are now in this agreement that weren't in the one that was from November fifteen. And exactly how the trees all got lined out, just taken care of, we're not gonna do any more tree removals. It's all state now. So, from that standpoint, it's all pretty much winding up and getting to the point where they'll bid their contract.
Have they made a decision yet on detours?
Yes, there's been a lot of conversation on detours. Their truck route is still ninety-four to twenty-six to eighteen. And then there's what they call the local access detour, which is set up by us. And we have to pay for those detour signs. And then there are other signages that are allowed that Main Street and Chamber are working on. And then we'll go from there. But as the project also shifts, the detour routes shift, the local access routes shift too. So, we've gone through a pretty extensive set of documents and we've submitted them for approval as far as, as local access roads.
I would be correct in saying that work will be starting at the corner of Madison and Main Street? Generally speaking? Or am I wrong on that? No, yes?
I guess I would prefer to say that that is a means and methods issue for the contractor and he'll make a determination. If I were a betting person, I would say that the likelihood is it's gonna start somewhere around Water Street and head north.
Oh, really?
Yes, because.
But it'll still be closed at that point because they have to have, they can't have traffic coming in there, right?
Yes, it will be closed from Madison Street to Water Street. And then there'll be a small access from Water Street to Veterans.
Okay.
And then what I'm assuming will happen is, is there, the sanitary sewer splits there. So, what we just did out here right now, that'll get pushed out into the center of Main Street. And then they'll hook it, they'll start everything from there south. And then they'll create a bypass. And I assume that they'll probably start constructing the utilities south.
Oh, really?
And they'll bypass the existing utilities around to what is Lake Street. And then that'll continue to flow. And then they'll start actually building the road from Water Street north.
Okay.
And that's an assumption on my part, but that's what I would do. And then, there's no real other sanitary sewer or water construction north of Water Street because we've all, we did that, I don't know if you remember, some prairie sand and gravel that the, and the water main was put in years ago, but it's still in good condition and substantial. Probably the main thing that we're gonna do there is tear out all the old water and sewer lines on the west side of the street. So, where people thought there might be sidewalks there until later in the project, they're probably coming out real early. And then, so we'll see how that works out.
We'll just make believe we're living in eighteen sixty for the sidewalk picture.
Yeah. They'll actually do a, they'll do the sidewalk half and half. So, they'll probably tear out the, they'll leave four feet of sidewalk and then they'll tear out everything, all the sidewalk and the curb and everything. And they'll put in a hand railing type of fence on the edge of that sidewalk and you can walk up and down the street and access. And then they'll pour back in probably the curb and gutter and a piece of sidewalk. And then they'll tear the other one out. And then they'll have some kind of, the buildings that have to have access from the front, they'll probably have a ramp crossed or some kind of system. And the ones that can access from the back, they'll be asked to access from the back. And because most of the parking is gonna be in back during that time, you would be, it would be to your advantage to access from the back.
And we'll be working with the Chamber of Commerce on that as well.
And Main Street. We have, all three of us have been working together and putting together plans and ideas and options for how we're gonna do that. The Main Street ER Committee met the other day and we met with Erin, Erin Welty. And she works for them, but she's had experience with planning those types of activities. So, she gave them a lot of ideas on how to, to make the downtown area work during construction.
What about work still to go on easements and things like that? Is there still much to do on that?
I guess from my standpoint, there are probably three or four left.
Okay.
I know there's one that we call the unknown parcel. And then there are probably a couple other ones that are on the verge of going to full-fledged condemnation.
Yeah.
But they tend to keep trickling in. I'd say that we're probably ninety-two, ninety-three percent complete already.
And as I look at the stuff here, it looks like, and correct me if I'm totally off-base here, probably seventy-five to eighty percent of our municipal costs are coming from our changing of the water sewer and those things. Am I correct?
Well, and the lights too.
There's, there's probably about six and a half million dollars worth of projects. Of that, probably, even maybe closer to seven, three, about three point two million dollars is water and sewer.
Okay.
Then we have somewhere around, well, we have five hundred thousand dollars in the streetlights. And we'll probably have some cost in the street trees. The ones that are on private property, we definitely paid a hundred percent of that we didn't even wait for. And we have to pay for the parking lane.
Okay.
And we have to pay for some of the engineering. But really, overall, we paid a pretty minor amount of the total cost, except for things that we added in as extras.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
And one thing you might wanna note on those, on the streetlights, they had a certain, like a hundred thousand dollars that they were paying for the, for what they would've paid if they had to move them.
Yep.
And then they gave us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the, what they call their decorative options.
They gave us a little, huh?
A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, that's nice.
I think our.
I see that.
Our actual cost on streetlights was probably around two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, something like that.
Okay.
Will we get the streetlights we wanted?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, they, they bought the streetlights, we sent them. That was, that was just like the sanitary sewer, that was our decision how we built that.
So, that decorating budget also includes replacement of trees and so on?
No. The replacement of trees comes from, they pay to replace trees in the tree lawn because they, they were taken out. But they, they pay at a pretty, pay like five hundred and twenty-five dollars a tree.
What does a tree run in cost these days?
Depending on what kind of trees have been picked, it's, it could be between a hundred and forty and two hundred dollars.
Okay.
But then you have your installation costs and your grading and seeding costs around it. And then you have to water it and keep it up. And then you have cer, a certain amount of them are gonna die and you're gonna have to replace them. So, you figure that the cost, somewhere between the five hundred and the seven hundred dollar range.
Our connection with above isn't good enough to guarantee watering on a regular basis.
Not mine. Maybe Dan's.
Yeah. That's why we hired them.
I just barely I have.
But anyway, okay. Well, that's good. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we can take a look at motion seventeen six two four and do a roll call vote, huh? We have everything we need, right? Yep. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. There we go. All right. Let's get a little agenda moving now. Item H, Resolution seventeen twenty-eight, wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report. And this did get approved through the Public Works Board. So, that has hap, has happened. We do have Resolution seventeen twenty-eight, which is fairly long, but we've all seen it. Would you read the title for that?
Resolution seventeen dash twenty-eight, authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills Wastewater Treatment Plant Compliance Maintenance Annual Report to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
I move adoption of Resolution seventeen twenty-eight.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Fields. All right. Discussion.
One of the things that the CMAR does is identify deficiencies in your wastewater treatment plant. And then they resolutions as a notice from the council to the DNR stating that you will fix them. We did not have any substantial issues. So, there's nothing really that you're doing other than acknowledging you saw the wastewater treatment plant, CMAR. So, other than that, I don't think there was anything to comment on.
If anybody have questions on the report itself, please like to ask Steve. Let's see, none. Okay. And, okay, well, I guess we can do a roll call vote. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Moving to item I, Resolution seventeen nineteen, sewer user charge. Okay. Would you read, hold on a minute, let me get to it. All right. Yeah. And this again, if you're really interested in it and you're at home, I would suggest you take a look at it on the website because there are a lot of numbers. Would you read the title, please?
Resolution seventeen dash twenty-nine, authorizing the city manager and staff to take actions necessary to implement the sewer user charge adjustments.
Okay. And I would take a motion to approve the resolution?
I move Resolution seventeen dash twenty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, open for discussion. Questions?
At what? I know some of our things, like impact fees, things like that, we actually go by a percentage. Was this just a recommendation to go up for these different rates? Because I see some of them are like two dollars per one meter equivalency.
Well, we paid for the, the engineering study to do a determination of what was generating the costs and where, you know, sewer user charges are coming from. And then they apply those across the rates as they see the improvements applying. And so, I believe that, that's one of the reasons why they took the route they did. I don't remember any other conversations. Do you, Vicki, at the?
Not really. I do recall that the engineer told us that even though we have these charges for the septic and the holding tank waste, we never accept those, so those are gonna be irrelevant, but we have to have it in the resolution.
Right. And so, if you get a feel for it, it, you pretty much get an idea of what's gonna generate our revenues and why, why the improvements are being made. If you look at South Main Street. If you look at South Main Street, I mean, that's a huge sanitary sewer rev- uh, expenditure. The same with Mulberry, and they're all pretty much residential. The commercial areas was done years ago, I think two thousand and ten was when we did South Main Street for the commercial area, so uh, in two thousand and four, we did um, a portion of it too, so in, in the overall prospectus, if you look at the capital improvements that are being made and how they're being spread out, it's pretty much on the residential.
So what does it mean by one meter equivalency, just one tick on it? You know, it goes up one number, or how, how would somebody understand that if they saw the meter charges for the five eigh- five-eighth inch meter, meter equivalency is one, and it went from thirteen, whatever it was, to fifteen sixty-three?
If I remember correctly, the meter equivalency isn't the, the, um, unit?
Right.
It's, you know, generally a five-eighths meter and a three-quarter inch meter are used in a one-inch service. So if you're looking at um, the monthly charge, it's looking at an equivalency in the, what they do is, is they take, uh, the average, um, water sewer bill in that time period, and then that's what they're comparing it against, so a lot of times it's like thirty-five hundred gallons or, or forty-five hundred gallons. So, um, and that's what would be the monthly charge. So that would be the, the, how do they, they've come up with the units, the, the actual equivalence, equivalency, I don't remember being that, but maybe, Vicki, did he talk at all about that?
I don't recall, um, but uh, the five-eighths inch and the three-quarter inch, aren't those pretty much what everybody has unless it's industrial?
Right, five-eighths and three-quarter inch are the standard meters. Um, and they generally go in a one-inch service, three-quarter to one-inch service. Um, and then as you go up, the, generally the water service line gets bigger. Some, but the, the actual monthly charge is based off of what the average, um, sewer bill in the, in the city of Lake Mills is for that type of use. And so, um, pretty much five-eighths and three-quarter and one-inch are residential.
So is that based on, I, I'm just asking because I'd like to understand if somebody asks me some questions about this. Is that charged based on the water
Meter usage.
Usage coming into the house? That's the meter we're talking?
Right.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought, I just wanted to.
It's the exact same meter that measures your water.
Yep.
And, um, it runs, used to run in gallons. Now it runs on cubic feet.
And they, my understanding, if you have your two meters in your house, one for like your outside use and one for inside use, it's a lower rate on the outside use.
Because you're.
No, well, no. We should clarify that. There's no lower rate on the outside use, you only get charged for water. Because you're using it outside, you don't pay the sewer charge.
Gotcha.
So what we call that meter is a deduct meter because then you don't pay for sewer charges.
Gotcha.
And that's because that water doesn't go into the sewer, it goes into your lawn or your swimming pool.
That's an assumption on some part, I'm not gonna guarantee that, but we do that, we put that meter in, in a fashion that it should be difficult to do that.
Right.
I've seen people manipulate it, they run a hose from one bib to the other bib and run it back into the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not supposed to be happening.
Okay. Thanks for that, Steve, I just wanted to make sure I understood it and
That's good questions.
Whoever's listening can hopefully understand it.
Right. Any other questions from council regarding this resolution? Seeing none, call the questions, please. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero. Okay. Moving to item J, resolution seventeen-thirty amending impact fees. Okay, moving to that resolution. This one also has lots of numbers, so I'm gonna ask you to read the title, just very short.
Resolution seventeen dash thirty adjustments to impact fees.
All right, and let's get a motion and a second on this, is there a motion?
Shall move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, now let's discuss, you know, I don't think we need Misty to read all these numbers, so um, those of you who are at home might want to take a look at it, it's a lot of different numbers. Who wants to speak to this one?
Historically, we have an ordinance in place that says that we have to raise the impact fees by the rate of inflation.
Okay.
You don't have to do that, but we bring it forward in that fashion because that's what the ordinance requires. Inflation hasn't been very high recently, hasn't had a lot of impact, but there were certain times where it was, made a lot of difference. We instituted new impact fees in the last year on sanitary sewer. So, um, Betsy included the map that showed the sanitary districts' impact fees areas. And that's why the, the resolution is laid out the way it is, a little bit more complicated than it might have historically been.
It's really pretty, though.
The
Purple, pink, green?
The uh, water impact fees stayed the same under the steam, same assumptions. And so, um, again, it's a, um, a percentage on what has been in place since ninety-six. The wastewater ones, like I said, they've been adjusted, so it'll be a slight adjustment into those for the new year. Um, the other ones that we charge are, um, a parks one, which will stay in place and is being adjusted, and then we have a community center one, which is being adjusted.
Yes.
But it will come off in November of two thousand and seventeen.
In December, when we pay the debt that's associated with it. Okay.
Other than that, there's not a lot there, I mean, we went through, most of you have been involved, maybe Stig is new, but we have to, by state law, we have to go through and do a very extensive study in order to determine what does and doesn't qualify, and we have to meet a whole bunch of state standards, so we have a full impact fee report, set of reports on every one of our impact fees. And, uh, we comply with all the statutory requirements. So if anybody's interested in knowing how we've made the determination, uh, they're welcome to come in, it's always based on capital improvements that apply to, um, generally across the board in the community, although they don't have to be, but then you have to do like we did on the wastewater, you have to zone them.
Some of this is, um, having to do with TIF districts, right? Because it looks like it on the map.
No, it, it doesn't have anything to do with TIF districts, it has to do with what I'll call watersheds.
Oh, watersheds, okay.
And generally, most of our watersheds have, uh, because sanitary sewer gravity flows, um, watersheds generally impact the sanitary costs. Uh, particularly when they include a lot of lift stations, and Lake Mills has at least seventeen lift stations. We may have more now. And so each one of those, um, areas is, is, um, part of the impact, um, of our wastewater system. And so we went through and did a thorough evaluation of how each one of those areas impacts the, um, wastewater system, and, um, then we assigned cost to it, and the council approved it, and we filed it with the state.
It looks like there's a lot of work into this map.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of work.
Somebody need to live in doing this.
Yeah, an engineer.
And, and the finance guy, remember, that was a, that was a combination of, uh, Kevin, Brandon, and, um, John Cameron from LRS.
Makes me tired just thinking about it.
Uh, I think that it might be relevant for anybody listening from home that impact fees relate to new development, so an existing homeowner isn't even gonna be charged an impact fee because what they have has already impacted the system, this is new development that would have to pay it.
Yeah, we have, uh, there are a couple different ways you can collect impact fees, you can collect it from the developer at the time of the approval of the subdivision, or you can collect it from builders as they build, we collect from builders as they build. Um, but it's still, uh, if you owned your house, if you have a house that's constructed, you've paid the impact fees long ago and, and don't have to worry about it. As for people, people who are building new houses.
And we will have some of that coming up. There'll be some.
And for the most part, they won't even notice it.
That'll be, that'll be a conversation for the budget.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions about resolution seventeen-thirty? Otherwise, call the questions. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero. Okay, moving on to item K. Resolution seventeen thirty-one annual weights and measures assessments. Would you read the title for that, please?
Resolution seventeen dash thirty-one establishing schedule of assessment for weights and measures.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen thirty-one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Oops, come back here. Took off south here. Do you have any comments you want to make on that one, Steve?
Uh, when the city be, um, crossed the threshold of five thousand people, we were required by the state to do weights and measures. They gave us, uh, two options, we can use our own department or contract. And they strongly recommended contracting with them, which is what the council opted to do. And then the way they did that was, we contracted with the state, they send us a bill, we divide that bill up across the people who, um, go through the weights and measures process. And, um, so gas pumps, scales, anything that does a measure, propane tank, they have to go through a weights and measure process and they have to pay a fee annually.
Is that, do they inspect once a year?
Yes.
I'm confused. License fee collected, that's what we, what they pay themselves. Right, but then we've got this other list on the memo. So are the, are there two kinds of things going on here?
Each entity has a license application. There's a ten-dollar fee on each one of those, that's a hundred and forty that's collected.
Yeah, okay.
And then, once a license is, is applied for and granted, they are assessed a further fee based on the use that's disclosed in the license.
Does the state do that?
The state basically provides, um, the threshold, two thousand dollar amount that must be repaid. Now, we repay it in the eighteen sixty plus one forty.
And it goes by what they use in their business for
What type of weight and measure they use, incorrect. The biggest being century and the, the new market, and then on down the list.
I get it.
The code spells out who falls into what class there, based on what type of business you have or size for, um, amounts of scales. And so then, based on their application, puts them into the class, and that's how it's determined.
The code just basically took what the state told us they were gonna charge them for each type of inspection. We don't make any money on this, this is straight pass-through. And in fact, we're not allowed to make money on it.
So basically, if everything is the way it should be, the century in Lake Mills is paying the same amount as the century in other cities, kind of thing.
That's not necessarily accurate.
Not.
It depends on how many scales and things they have, a big century might have a lot more measuring devices.
Goes by what they, I get it, okay. Any other questions for Steve, or anybody? Or call the question on air? Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero. Okay, moving us on to item L, which is our last item on this agenda. Ordinance eleven-seventy-eight zoning amendment from rural development to single-family residential. Aye for Douglas Brock Trust and Patty Brock Trust, located at nine-nine-seven West Madison Street. This is the first reading, um, you have to read the whole ordinance, don't you?
I have to read the ordinance, but
We're not gonna read the legal description as it's been previously disclosed when the property was annexed by the city of Lake Mills.
Right.
This is merely changing a request, based on a request to change the zoning of that property from the RD, Rural Development, to R-one-four, uh, the lowest level of capacity for residential building.
Okay, and this, if, if you've been following with council meetings, you've heard us talk about this parcel several times before tonight. So, changing zoning, would you read the part you need to read?
Ordinance eleven-seventy-eight amended sections ten dash five dash two and ten dash five dash six, official zoning map, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel two-four-six-zero-seven-one-three-one-one-one-three-zero-zero-zero, nine-nine-seven West Madison Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, five-three-five-five-one. The city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section ten dash five dash two and ten dash five dash six, the official zoning ordinance and map of the city of Lake Mills are hereby amended to zone the following described property from rural development to single-family residential to it, parcel two-four-six-zero-seven-one-three-one-one-one-three-zero-zero-zero, nine-nine-seven West Madison Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, five-three-five-five-one. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contributing to provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Okay, now this is the first reading, but due to the fact that we didn't have a meeting at the last time, we would have had a regular meeting, and we hit Fourth of July coming up in the future, so we have another, probably not meeting that day. Um, they've requested that we move to second and third reading, so, um, we need a motion to suspend the rules?
Uh, well, a motion to, um, basically advance to a final reading on this topic.
Okay, so is there someone who, well, we don't have a motion at all yet, do we? No, did we?
Nothing yet.
No, because this would just be the first reading, so the first, if we're gonna move it, then we would need the motion. Otherwise, it'd simply just pass the second reading.
We do the moving to the third reading first.
Right.
Okay.
You waive the second reading and move to the third reading.
That's what I need, a motion, you got it, Vicki.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to waive the second reading and go on to the third reading.
Oh, it's so nice having her here, following up. We got a second, we're in good shape here. All those in favor say aye. Oh, no, we can't do that. We can't, can we? Okay, call the roll. Sorry, I like my method, but that's okay. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero. Okay. Now we're at the third reading. Now we need a motion to approve, but what, does she have to read it again?
I know, well, I think you might want her to read it again. I know, well, I think you might want her to read it again.
Read it again, please.
The, I think the title is what's required.
Read the title again, please.
Ordinance eleven-seventy-eight, amending sections ten dash five dash two and ten dash five dash six, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel two-four-six-zero-seven-one-three-one-one-one-three-zero-zero-zero, nine-ninety-seven West Madison Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, five-three-five-five-one.
Okay, so, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance? As amended?
I move ordinance one-one-seven-eight.
You, you did something, he did, I'm going to take his motion.
No, yeah, nothing was amended, that's why I didn't.
That's why, all we advanced was the reading.
We didn't amend it.
There's no amendment to the actual ordinance.
Oh, okay, so, sorry.
Caught me, I'm curious.
No, 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 and it felt like I was amending it, but we were really suspending the rules on the readings.
Yes.
So it's just as is.
Yes.
Sorry, Doug, I didn't mean to throw you a curve there. So did you approve it as is?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you for catching that. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed, five-zero. Okay, thank you for doing that. And that takes us to item nine, recommendations for future agendas. As I just referenced, our next regular meeting would be on the Fourth of July, and since that's a legal holiday, and I think we can work around that, um, because we saw it coming, there won't be a meeting on the Fourth of July. Our next meeting will be on June, I mean, July, that's two weeks after that.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth? July eighteenth. So are there any recommendations for the July eighteenth meeting? Agenda items. Okay, well, seeing none at this time, we'll let that up to our staff to handle as things come up. Something's good. All right, and I adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned. Oh.